All right, Mr. Secretary.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting scheduled for Thursday, February 10th. At this time, I'd ask everybody to please stand as we salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, I wish to announce that the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. Notices announcing the date, time, and place for this meeting were sent to all concerned individuals, associations, and sent to Union County local source in accordance with Chapter 231 of Public Law, 1975. At this time, I will call the role. Ms. Primack.
Here.
Ms. Justice.
Here.
Ms. Cullen.
Here.
Mr. Cho.
Here.
Vice President Cullen.
Here.
President Bonner.
Here.
You have a call.
Fantastic. Welcome, everyone. This is quite possibly and arguably the greatest board meeting in all of the board meetings in the course of a year. We're going to give out some books. And then immediately following that, we're going to talk about the budget process for the coming school year. And then following that, we're going to talk about the greatness that stands behind you with regards to how our schools are doing in relationship to our school goals. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Grimaldi.
Good evening. This evening, we honor the Summit High School seniors who have received the distinction of being named a Scholar Student by the 2022 National Merit Scholarship Program. In order to be recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program, students need to receive a qualifying score on the PSATs that we're taking during their junior year. A small portion of these students go on to receive recognition as National Merit Scholar semifinalists and then finalists. This is an amazing accomplishment that students can include in their applications for colleges and that qualifies the students to receive scholarships. Likewise, tonight, these students will pay tribute to a current or former district staff member who has had a profound impact on them during their time in Summit. The students will be presenting their honored guest with a special book and an accompanying inscription. So I'm going to call the students' names up, and then I'm also going to tell the teacher and the book that they've received, and I ask that everybody come up, and we're going to line up right in front here, please. The first student, Mia Battistella, has chosen Monica Bartlett, and has presented to her The Diary of Frida Kahlo. Our second student is Jeremiah Cullen. Please come get your certificate. Chantel Kohl's Shatar is presenting Mr. Baragona with The Greatest Game Ever Played. Nandini Dubey is presenting Ms. Karen Ingram with Sophie's World. Abigail Elliott is presenting Creative Manifestos Inspirational Statements to Celebrate Self-Expression to Ms. Lindsay Morse. Anna Stupinen is presenting Mr. Matt Ramstead with the Anthro... Caitlin Fagan is presenting The Art of War to Mr. Luke Peaty. Alex Gallegos is presenting The Communist Manifesto to Ms. Gary Burns. Joseph Jinglewski is presenting Mr. Eric Fontes with Born to Run: A Hidden Tribe, Supra-Athletes, and The Greatest Race the World Has Ever Seen. Adav Gupta is presenting Ms. Ann Pointer with Musicals: The Definitive Illustrative Story. Gillian Hempel is presenting to Ms. Rose McCauley Up the Down Staircase. Meredith Jenkins presenting Ms. Nicole Fatides with The Disappearing Spoon and Other True Tales of Madness, Love, and the History of the World from the Periodic Table of Elements. Unfortunately, Ms. Fatides could not be here this evening, so Meredith will give her the book at a later time. Sarah Kane is presenting Architecture 101: A Crash Course in Style, Form, and Structure to Ms. Ann Dooley. Natasha Kim is presenting Mr. Rob Gannon with Miss Rumpfius. Olivia Lawler is presenting Ms. Allison Flochhardt with Make Your Bed: Little Things That Can Change Your Life and Maybe the World. Olivia cannot be here this night. Tonight, Ms. Flochhardt is here. Sophie Malik is presenting Mr. Tom O'Dowd Eating the Sun: Small Musings on a Vast Universe. Natalie Peralta is presenting If We Were Villains to Ms. Ashley Garcia. Gianna Portilla is presenting The Secret History to Ms. Jen Ren. Thea Rindt is presenting Ms. Melissa Bryan with The Soul of an Octopus. Ariana Rodriguez is presenting to Dr. Stephanie Baptiste The Hidden Figures. Rebecca Romano is presenting to Ms. Elizabeth Berberich When Women Ruled the World: Making the Renaissance in Europe. Lily Rose Smith is presenting to Ms. Joan Lu If I Could Tell You Just One Thing: Counters with Remarkable People and Their Most Valuable Advice. Sapir Shojay is presenting to Ms. Ja Zhang The Saffron Tales. Santiago Solis Negron is presenting Tales of a Fourth Grade Nothing to Ms. Kathy Connect. Michael Spear is presenting to Mr. Neil Sharma Bradbury Stories. And Ashley Thomas is presenting to Mr. Adam Lehman Moneyball. We have two additional students and staff members who could not be here. Connor Wirral will presenting Mr. Jim Woods with a book at a later time, and William Zhang had presented his book to Mr. Jeremy Mormon earlier today. This is a great accomplishment. It just shows the relationships that our staff members have with our students and the support that they feel here in the building. So thank you very much. And not just the building, it should be across the district because there's elementary school teachers, middle school teachers, as well as coaches and high school staff who are here tonight. Congratulations again to these students and their families for receiving this honor, and to the staff members.
We're going to take a quick break. I don't even know if this thing works. We're going to take a quick break so we can kind of reposition a little bit. I know all of these students want to go home and start studying right away. So if you leave, we won't be upset, and then we're going to start back up in just a couple minutes.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Does it sound like I'm on mic? Can you hear me? Okay, great. Very pleased to be here tonight with Mr. Derek Jess to present a budget process for Summit Public Schools that we go through every year. And of course, it's the best for the best. We take this process very seriously. This is something we pride ourselves on, that we can directly make an impact in the classroom for our children. The budget process really starts way back in October. We meet regularly with all of constituents, the administrative team throughout the district, and it's focused on students' and staff needs. We're clearly focusing all of what we do to design a budget on student achievement and putting those dollars as much as possible into the classroom for curriculum so that we can not only just meet the standards, exceed the standards, and the academic excellence that we expect here in Summit Public Schools. So we engage the district leaders in this collaborative process way back in October. We have several meetings as we go through the process, and Mr. Jess will share with you that budget calendar later in this presentation. And it's always a balancing act. We take a look at very targeted areas for review, and as I mentioned, of course, classroom instruction, curriculum and staff development, giving our teachers the tools, the development, the practice to be the best that they can for the students in our classroom. This is what we've come to expect and we've become to be known for. And of course, access to technology. We've made very, very large investments in technology over the last several years, and we're continuing to always look to enhance, grow, and have... ...the cutting edge of technology. And some things you'll hear us talk about in our next presentation about the mid-year goals for the board is some of the initiatives, but we're always looking at the programs as well, whether it be guidance and counseling, support for our students, and we know that that's most important more now than ever, and what we do for SEL and supporting the needs and mental health and wellness of our children, and of course, our athletics and co-curriculars. Hilltop or Pride, we have lots of after-school activities that so much, a very, very large percentage of our kids take participation in, and we thrive in those activities. We excel. A lot of accolades over the years because of that, so it's very important. And obviously, our facilities and maintenance. Summit Public Schools, if you had an opportunity to be in other districts, we have top-notch facilities. We've worked hard at that over the years. It's a priority, and it's something that we always consider in the budget process to make sure we enhance, maintain. We go through our five-year cycle to replace equipment and facilities and make sure everything is up to snuff and just in perfect condition. I will tell you that we have a very, very passionate administrative team so that when we go through this process, they really are literally arguing for every dollar. They argue for their teachers, they argue for their supplies, they argue for their facilities, and it's a commitment. All of our team is committed to go through this process to maintain that excellence, our social responsibility to be on the cutting edge of programs, activities, technology, all to get towards what we want through a K-12 experience, the portrait of a Summit Public School graduate. So when they leave us and move on to the world, we prepare them as best that we can through that whole entire K-12 experience. And that's how we look at the budget as well. It's not just a snapshot of every one part or one school. It's a K-12 experience, and I will share with you again, our leaders really compete for those dollars and argue for what they need, and we go through that process to vet it and prioritize every year. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Jess.
Thank you, myself. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the fabulous world of budget process, soon to be the fabulous world of the fiscal year '23 budget. We're very excited about it, as you can tell. You know, we are educating the leaders of tomorrow today, so every dollar that we put into the classroom will pay us unlimited dividends as we move forward into the future. One of the things you'll see here is smart purchasing, so that's how the district can effectively and efficiently spend the dollars we have today so that the purchases going towards our students and our faculty and our administrators tomorrow will be the best that it can be. We utilize national co-ops, we utilize state costs, utilize state contracts so that we can get the best products at the cheapest price to keep that money within our district. Innovations, working with technology, you'll hear about STEAM initiatives moving forward as well. So utilizing all of those aspects to help our students succeed today and tomorrow is a priority for everybody as well. Portrait of a Graduate, you know, we work through from pre-K all the way to 12 to ensure that at every step of the way, our students are getting not only what they want, but what they need, and that certainly ensures the success moving forward for everybody. So, you know, our budget process is a very strict one because we have to conform with guidelines as proposed by the Department of Education. So in January, the administration met with our Operations Committee, as we do on a monthly basis, to talk about operations going forward, and one of the things that we had talked about was a very brief conversation about the budget process and where we were. And the main reason for that is because I just started here in Summit on January 1st, so I needed to get my feet wet. And while I am familiar with the budget process, it was my first time being immersed in it here in Summit. And so now we move on to February. So we had our second Operations Committee meeting this past Monday, in which we provided the Operations Committee with the tentative appropriations for our budget for next year right now. And so they were able to review it, ask questions on a mid-to-almost-high level, and we will have more discussions with them moving forward once we find out what our state aid numbers are, which won't be until the end of this month after the governor provides his state of the state to the state. Today is our board meeting, so this is when we're doing our budget process. Moving on to next month, March 3rd, is when we will meet with the Board of School Estimate for our initial presentation. March 10th will be a regular board meeting in which there might be some discussion on the budget, but it won't be prevalent at that meeting. Followed by, right now, tentatively set for March 28th will be our public hearing on the budget and also discussion with the Board of School Estimate again. So, you know, it's a very strict process that we need to adhere to in order to conform to guidelines set by the Department of Education. So what are some of the things that impact the budget? You know, because a lot of times, people don't realize what goes into the budget. So our main expenses on the budget are our personnel and our insurance, whether it's health benefits or whether it's property and casualty. So this year, right now, in our first review of our insurance, you know, we're being told that the increased cost of health benefits will be somewhere right now about 14 and a half percent. So, you know, my hair got this color because of numbers like that, so we're hoping to dial it back a little bit and get that down, which is more reasonable for the district. Also, an increase in our property and casualty rates, that's right now projected at 15%. And a lot of that has to do with this recent storm we had, like Hurricane Ida, cyber attacks on various school districts and government entities as well. All of this comprises our property casualty insurance. The implementation of a new math curriculum, which will be in Vision K-5, and Mr. Huff and Ms. McCann will be talking about that, and that's something that we're excited about. Staffing needs based upon district initiatives, which Mr. Huff and Ms. McCann will also elaborate on. Maintaining the excellence of our facilities, we heard through our capital projects, you know, we, at our January board meeting, we approved a high school HVAC project, so that's going to air-condition the remainder of the high school, and so we are looking forward to doing that. And we're also discussing an upcoming bond referendum, which will hopefully encompass projects from other schools, not only the high school, which will help get our schools where we need to be moving forward. And lastly, living in a 2% cap in a world that is 5% plus increases. So, you know, we are mandated by the State of New Jersey not to have an increase in taxes of more than 2%. However, sometimes that's difficult to do when, as I mentioned before, insurance is increasing between 14 and 15%. Staff raises are going up, the cost of goods and services now is also going up because of the pandemic. So we have to try to maintain all of those expenditures while only increasing our revenue by 2%. So sometimes that's a little hard to do, but with the administrative team and the board that we have here, you know, they are very in tune to that and provide really great suggestions moving forward to help us accomplish that. One of the things that I've learned since I've gotten here is how involved the community is through the SEF, our support groups, you know, our local grants. In the districts that I was in in the past, we didn't have near the support that we have here in Summit, and as an outsider coming in, I find it incredible, and it's just amazing. And so for the past support, the current support, and the future support that we hope continues, you know, Mr. Huff and myself just really appreciate everything, and we look forward to the collaboration moving forward to continue those relationships and those donations and the support coming in.
Yeah, and just to echo that, it didn't take Mr. Jess long to realize what the community is like here in Summit Public Schools. And all of these organizations, we couldn't do what we do without them. SEF has donated over $5 million in the last many years, and as well as all of these other organizations and PTOs and boosters listed up here, they provide our students with so much more exposure and access, well beyond what we do in the operating budget. So we thank them, we partner with them, and we would look forward to future partnership with them because our students benefit tremendously from them. And I'll finally say, you know, this budget process is not easy. It's long, it's hard, and we are very lucky to have Mr. Jess come in mid-year and pick up the beginning of somebody else's budget, and he's doing a great job with it, so we're thankful for his experience and his ability to get us across the finish line in this budget cycle. And with that, that's just the overview. We'll definitely be sharing, you know, more details at the March 3rd meeting, and when we get our state aid numbers and final funding formulas, we'll understand better where we lie, and we can give you more detail into next year's budget. Does the board have any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Ms. McCann?
Probably have the unconnection. All right. Well, notice, Ms. Grimaldi tried to come to the rescue as I just stood there because we all knew I would not be any help. That is for sure. Unfortunately, not able to connect with our visual on our slideshow, but we can certainly speak to it. Every year, we establish numerous board goals or district goals that really drive what we do from the board level and cascade down all the way through cabinet-level administrative goals, principal goals, into the school goals, and we work collectively to achieve that. We are in year two of some multi-year goals for our district, and at the mid-year point like today, we share with you some of the overview, broad-stroke progress, a summary of where we are and what we've been doing. So one of our first goals here is Summit Public Schools will develop a plan to expand learning experiences for all students in the areas of science, technology, engineering, arts, mathematics, STEAM, to cultivate interest, encourage innovative thought processes, and prepare for future opportunities in a dynamic global society. And as I mentioned, this is year two for this goal. What we've accomplished so far is that, going back to the end of last year, we have organized a district-wide committee of our STEAM committee comprised of administrators, supervisors, principals, teachers working in the areas, and we've also created subcommittees based on grade spans, K-5, middle level, high school, to talk about what we want to accomplish in the next five years when it comes to STEAM. Now, we already accomplished so much, there's so much that we are doing, but we're going to work hard to be on the cutting edge of what's next and continue to grow the programs we have. And right now, what we're doing is we're creating that multi-year plan, and we're looking at that through the lens of three things: our programming, our facilities, and any staffing needs that may come along with some new programs. We're really excited about what we have to offer. We're looking really next year to implement some really exciting new STEAM curriculum programs and facilities if we can. We're very adventurous in our timelines, but we're, I think, the work that we put in over the last year has positioned us to take that next step. So we'll be happy to share with you at the end-of-the-year review, more details of where we are and what we'll be accomplishing in the years to come. Goal number two, Summit Public Schools will continue to enhance its experiences through social and emotional learning programming within all areas of the New Jersey social and emotional learning competencies, with an emphasis on relationship skills and social awareness. This is, again, so important where we are now, going through the pandemic and approaching year three, believe it or not, and we've completed a lot in this area. It's been a priority of ours. We've added some staffing in the Counseling Department and Programming to support our students' needs. And for example, I just wrote a couple of things here. For some transition activities, we've been providing team-building activities that help support those students who have been remote learners and coming back into a full-day setting. We've also conducted and administered student surveys for students in grades four to 12 to assess their belongingness and connectedness to school. We're in the process of analyzing that data and information and then developing any sort of programs or approaches for this year and next that will address any concerns that may show us some information from those results. And we've been providing a lot of parent workshops lately. Workshops like Just Talk About It: How to Learn of the Warning Signs of Stress, Anxiety, Depression, and Crisis; Tips for Managing Your Child's Behavior Using Positives; and Virtual Coffee and Conversations with Carrie; How to Deal with Disappointment and Perfection. We really try to help the parents as well with these programs, social-emotional learning, because it's really a community effort because they can better help their own kids as well. We have them during the day, they go back home weekends, so it's important that if we can support the parents as well, we do. And some of our upcoming parent series include Supporting Your Child at Home Through Social-Emotional Learning; Supporting Children Coping with Loss and Trauma; and Supporting Your Child's Mental Health: Fostering Resilience in Your Child. So we look forward to those. Those dates are going to be posted on our website. Some of them are webinars, so you can access them if you would like from home. And then we'll talk about the programming that we've been completing through our SEL initiative, is we're continuing with K-5 programming and morning meetings, social problem-solving, middle school law and leaders, positive behavioral supports in schools, rewarding kids for doing the right thing through a community project, advisory lessons that we're focusing on in SEL and building rules. And at the high school, continuing our advisory, we do eight advisory lessons a year, which includes such items as kindness, empathy, stress, coping skills, team building, and character building. And also at the high school this year, in their shoes, a program, a school-wide campaign to support students and bring awareness to mental health illness. Very well attended, and we continue to look at bringing new programs in as we move forward through this year to complete our SEL goal. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McCann.
So our third goal for this current school year is the Summit Public Schools will improve its ability to utilize data to inform instructional programming and implement strategies that target areas of growth for all students. So what we started in the beginning of the school year was we established a district-wide committee, and then that committee broke out into subcommittees according to grade spans. And within those grade spans, we completed a data inventory, as well as an assessment inventory, and a data survey as well. All of those results have been utilized in order to start creating an action plan to determine where we have holes in any of our systems, and as a result of that, we've been exploring other data systems, as well as data warehouses and other learning management systems. We're talking about establishing data protocols, meaning the language that we utilize when we're analyzing our data, according to our district data teams, as well as our school data teams, and using that data in order to provide targeted instruction. One of the things that we also implemented this year so far is a new diagnostic assessment tool called iReady, and all of our administrators and teachers have received multiple trainings on this assessment tool throughout the course of the school year. Our fourth goal is the Summit Public Schools will continue to foster a culturally inclusive educational environment that values diversity and equity within its climate, operations, curricula, and programming. Similar to the other goals, we've also established a district committee in order to oversee the implementation of this goal, excuse me, I'm sorry, which broke out into several subcommittees. We have a policy committee, a professional development committee, as well as a communication committee, and these committees are being overseen by our Director of Student Personnel Services, Crystal Marr. We've also implemented a climate survey to our staff, and we're utilizing that data in order to make adjustments that we see fit within the district. And we've also, on November 2nd, our secondary staff, middle school and high school, received implicit bias training. What we continue to work on throughout the rest of the school year is we're going to continue with our equity audit, which is looking at different lenses in terms of instruction and programmatic programs that we've been putting in place, community perceptions, and achievement. And our, each of those subcommittees that I mentioned earlier, Policy, Professional Development, and Communication, will continue to work on their action plans for how we implement those different initiatives within the next couple of years.
As I said, this is just a mid-year review summary of where we're at and kind of where we're going. I do want to take a minute and really thank the entire administrative team, really, because it's a difficult challenge to be focused on forward-thinking initiatives like this to make change as expected in this community, especially when we're going through what we're going through over the last 18 months, and they worked tirelessly at this. I do not let them rest, from the principals, supervisors, all the way up to the cabinet, and especially our Director of Education, Ms. Jen McCann, who I rely heavily to really kind of spearhead a lot of these initiatives with me to make sure that we're keeping pace and making progress. So thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Is this stuff on the website?
It is.
Okay.
Sorry.
No, I don't know if anybody can hear me. People are home. They read this stuff on the website. They read this stuff on the website.
So this will be posted up on the website for anyone who wants to go back and take a look at what we just shared with you here tonight. You'll be able to find it on the website. Thank you.
It's been a good week for me. Last week, I got to spend some time at the Unified Basketball Game. If you have not been, I highly recommend. They are a ton of fun. I was most impressed by the number of high school students who came in to cheer for both teams, and so it was a lot of fun. So that was a good start, and then I absolutely loved the giving of the books. It was great to see some of our elementary and middle school teachers get books tonight, which is great. I know my daughter was impacted by several of them that got books tonight, so that was awesome. And it's Black History Month, so we're going to talk a little bit about that here, and then I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent for his report. As you all know, it is Black History Month. Every year at this time, it reminds me of one of the greatest stories ever told, and that is the story of the Tuskegee Airmen. On July 19th, 1941, 13 black cadets started segregated flight training. By the time the 332nd, which became their unit, flew its last combat mission on April 26, 1945, two weeks before the German surrender, the Tuskegee Airmen had flown more than 15,000 individual sorties over a two-year period in combat. They had destroyed or damaged 36 German planes in the air and 237 on the ground, as well as nearly 1,000 rail cars and transport vehicles and a German destroyer. In all, 66 Tuskegee-trained aviators were killed in action during World War II, while another 32 were captured as POWs after being shot down. They did all of this while living in a country that did not fully codify a black person's right to vote until 20 years later. Black history is indeed American history, and I'd like to take a few minutes to highlight the work of some of our students this month, many of whom are just a few years younger than the Tuskegee Airmen. In our high school, our students are working to increase awareness of black culture. The Black Student Union is featuring different works of art throughout the hallways. The club is also working alongside Union Hispania to highlight the Afro-Latina heritage and traditions. There is also a gallery in the high school showcasing black fashion, poetry, and arts with a theme of black excellence and black culture. Special thanks to the PTA for a grant that covered the books being used in the gallery on photography, art, and fashion. In the middle school, students are designing and creating classroom posters to highlight black scientists, the Civil Rights Movement, and black culture. Teachers will select their favorite poster to hang in their classroom to celebrate black history throughout the rest of the year. Student council members are building a digital, interactive timeline to learn about and celebrate black history in America. Their research focuses on six major areas: colonial area, era, post-American revolution, Civil War, Reconstruction, Jim Crow, Civil Rights Movement, and modern day. Within these time periods, members are learning about significant people and events in our country's history with a focus on justice and equality. In addition to providing the middle school community with information on these historic topics, members are discovering ways to honor and celebrate black culture through music, poetry, and through using an art timeline. In our elementary schools, Lincoln Hubbard is celebrating Black History Month with sounds of Motown. Lincoln Lions will enjoy songs and artists from the Motown label as part of its morning announcements throughout the month of February. Displays in the Lincoln Library will focus on contributions of black men and women, including poetry, biographies, fiction, and nonfiction titles. These titles are on display throughout the year and will be highlighted in a focused way throughout this month. In Washington, students are engaged in daily read-alouds and videos highlighting the accomplishments of black men and women. In Brayton, 4th grade students will utilize their nonfiction reading and writing strategies to research and explore the lives of well-known black men and women. The students will summarize how the actions of these individuals served as catalysts for social change and inspired social activism in subsequent generations. At Jefferson, all grades are engaging in nonfiction read-alouds of familiar and unfamiliar black men and women who made contributions to the areas of science, health, and medicine. Franklin Second graders will choose a historical figure and research basic biographical facts, character traits, and important life lessons. Students will then create short Google slideshow about the chosen topic. And even in our primary centers, we're looking at, we're studying Black History Month. At Wilson, a teacher is bringing in an interesting personal story into her classroom. Her uncle, Carlton Wiley, as she referred to as Uncle Cardy, played for the Braves with Hank Aaron. Hank and Carlton roomed together when the team traveled on the road for games. She plans on bringing pictures of Hank's jersey, telling students the story of their friendship, and explaining that some people did not approve of their friendship and were unkind because Hank was black and her uncle was white. If you have not already done so, I encourage you to seek out, seek out stories about black Americans and share them with your friends and loved ones, and please enjoy the rest of the month. And with that, turn it over to Superintendent Huff.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bonner. Knowing you were going to comment about that tonight, there's really not much more for me to say, but that's outstanding.
That's pretty thorough. I got some help on that.
And we're so proud of our students and our community for engaging in all the activities and celebrations. Outstanding. I'd like to continue with my comments, my report, by following up on the communication I put out to the community yesterday regarding the plan to be mask optional effective March 7th. The governor cited that his decision is reflective of the dramatic decline in COVID numbers, lower hospitalizations, higher vaccination rates, and a decrease in the severity of the virus. Before I notified the community of Summit Public Schools' decision to be mask optional, I consulted with my cabinet, the school principals, the Board of Education, the Summit Education Teachers Association, and the Department of Health. After consultation with these various stakeholders, it is clear that based on the governor's comments, Summit Public Schools is very well positioned to go mask optional effective March 7th. Today, the regional risk matrix of our Central East region is yellow for moderate for the first time since November. Even better than that, Summit typically trends much better than our regional data. As the governor and the Department of Education have announced, we are waiting for updated Department of Health guidance to be released about COVID protocols in the school setting. And as you know, there has been a lot of changes to the Department of Health protocols over the last several months. A lot has been happening very, very quickly. There has been a lot of discussion about the practice of contact tracing and quarantining asymptomatic, unvaccinated individuals in the school setting. We are expecting the new guidance to address this issue and other topics when it is released in the next couple of weeks. Once we receive the updated guidance, we will collaborate with the Department of Health and other stakeholders to evaluate what is going to be the best practice for us here in Summit Public Schools as it relates to that guidance. And finally, I want to thank the entire Summit Public School community for the manner in which we have approached and handled the last 18 months. This community has rallied together through all the twists and turns that this pandemic has given us. We have found a winning recipe for maintaining academic rigor, safety, and providing as much normalcy as possible for our students. I want to remind everyone that our winning recipe is predicated on supporting each other, respecting each other even when we disagree, appreciating the efforts that everyone in the school community who have incredibly challenging jobs, and putting our children first. We are by no means finished with the pandemic, and as we have learned, we don't know what may be coming around the corner when it comes to COVID. So I encourage everyone to continue to subscribe to our winning recipe of mutual respect and support each other in this community so we can make sure our students continue to have educational environment in which they can thrive and grow. Thank you. And moving on to activities in the school, Franklin Elementary School has hosted a snow play day on February 1st, where students went outside during the last hour of the day and were challenged to build snowmen and forts with their classmates. I enjoyed it very much. I visited and watched them play in the snow, and it was nice to see them with their teachers while the snow lasted. On Tuesday, February 1st, Brayton Elementary School celebrated the first Heritage Day of the school year. 5th grader Jason Kowal and 3rd grader Lillian Wang and their moms presented an interactive PowerPoint about their Chinese culture and New Year traditions. All of our elementary schools are teaming up to do a pajama and book drive throughout this month. Librarians are spearheading this effort, and they are asking for new pajamas and new books for kids and young adults who need them. Please bring donations to any of our elementary schools. The middle school boys and girls basketball teams honored the custodians in the building for their hard work with a short presentation and gave members of the custodial staff Summit Basketball sweatshirts. Well done. And congratulations to two of our middle school students for successfully auditioning for the Central Jersey Music Educators Association's Junior Region Ensembles. 8th grade trumpet player Alastair Eck, who will be the sixth chair in the Wind Ensemble, and 6th grade clarinet player Yashi Yang, who will be the 14th chair in the Symphonic Band. Tickets are on sale for Summit High School's Spring Musical Footloose, which is going to be happening March 2nd through the 5th in the high school auditorium, and members of the high school Chinese Club organized several activities to celebrate Lunar New Year in the high school library. Activities included Chinese checkers, ping pong, Chinese calligraphy, karaoke, and Kahoot trivia game on Chinese culture. Thank you to the Summit Music Parents Association for funding a visit from the Grammy-nominated New York-based Azari Quartet, who worked with students in the string orchestra, Chamber Orchestra, and Hilltop Quartet. And finally, in athletics, National Signing Day in February, we have several athletes once again signing to play athletic collegiate sports, beginning with Matty Boozum, lacrosse Pre-Vassar College, Leah Rubenstein, ice hockey, Williams College, Colin Beatty, lacrosse, Washington and Lee University, Jude Avellino, lacrosse, Skidmore College, and James Waddick, football, Gettysburg. A lot to celebrate, a lot going on. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Huff. Always good stuff. Good fun. I forgot about Footloose. I was going to say that. I got my tickets today, so if you haven't bought them, there's probably like two tickets left, so get on your phones now. I'm way in the back in the center, so there's not too many left. Good stuff. Okay, let's move on. We need to do the superintendent's report, which is now, keep me honest here, make sure I get this right. We've moved some things around on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
So what we need to do is we need to get a motion and a second on our new hires. Looks like Ms. Bress and Mr. Martello, right?
Before we make a vote on that, please, President Bonner, I'd like to say a few words.
By all means.
We began and celebrated tradition here in Summit now of welcoming our new staff, our new hires into the district, and we used to have what would be considered a hiring season, mostly starting in April and May. That's really no longer the case. It's kind of all year round these days. But we do only have one teacher here that was in a presence with us tonight that we'd like to celebrate. Ms. Jillian Bress, are you here?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Jillian. Jillian will be a teacher of Family and Consumer Science, which includes apparel, textiles, and interiors. Jillian holds a Bachelor's of Fine Arts degree with a major in fashion and a minor in design and merchandise from Montclair State University. Jillian has her Master's in marketing from Southern New Hampshire University. She comes to Summit with experience as a sewing instructor and a digital marketing manager, and we very much look forward to your contribution, so welcome. That is all for this meeting. Mr. Bonner.
Okay, thank you, sir. Forgot about that part. I think I'd get this right by now. I know you will in several months, right?
All right, so I can get a motion and a second on accepting our new hires?
So moved.
Thank you. On the roll, Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Franklin. Check's in the mail somewhere. All right, now we need to get a motion and a second on affirming the superintendent's decision following the receipt of reports of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and to accept three other reports. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Ms. Primack?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cho?
Yes.
Vice President Cologne?
Yes.
President Bonner?
Yes.
Motion passes. Fantastic. Committee reports.
Bogging up.
Education Committee, Ms. Miller.
I don't have to wear this next month?
That's what the governor says.
Cool with that. Okay. So Education Committee. The Education Committee met on February 3rd for 75 minutes. With me were Superintendent Huff, Ms. McCann, Yancho, and Walida Justice. We had three meaty topics. The first was curriculum budget for next year. As we already saw, the budget is in full swing, and Ms. McCann provided an overview of the curriculum budget requests, which outlines district-wide requests for the upcoming school year, the amounts requested, and those approved for inclusion in the budget process. So let's be clear, everything, I believe that Jen has asked for has been included in the budget, and then the budget has to be, you know, the magic has to start to happen. I have no doubt that the board and the Ops Committee will ensure that our programs remain as they are. That's just my little plug. The requests that we have, those historically typical for our district, there's summer curriculum needs in there, textbook updates of all levels, support for any new classes and programs, professional development, supplies, et cetera, and the committee unanimously supports the requests. The requests align with the June 2020 state standards. The two new STEAM-related courses that the board approved late last year, those are taken care of in there. The district's current elementary math textbook, Go Math, is going out of print. So a new print resource has been chosen. Envision was chosen after a cross-district, cross-level, cross-functional task force evaluated multiple instructional resources. The committee narrowed those down to three possibilities. Vendors came in to give presentation on those, and then they chose Envision. That is in there. That is a bulk of the curriculum budget request. Professional development continues to be a strong investment. It all looks good, and as I said, you know, it's once again a tough, you know, tough year to make a budget, but, you know, we're hoping all these things will be in there. The board goals. So again, because the board goal, the mid-year review wasn't up on the screen, you know, we all have it in the public, it is on the district website, so you can see that, you can always ask questions about it. Jen offered us an update, and we're on track to where we wanted to be with our goals, and we're, so far, we're fine. We did a deep dive into our STEAM-related goal, and that one is truly a multi-year goal, and this first year focuses on our being very intentional about what it is that we're going to do, and the district is coalescing around a shared vision for the next three or more years. And a guiding principle based on our own knowledge and data and parent feedback is to really get in there on the elementary levels. If we can capture enthusiasm at that level, we know that we'll be able to grow it. So we're looking to scope and scale and sequence a new science curriculum that in part is modeled after what Dr. Cordero at Jefferson School is doing with his Innovation Lab, and that was in one of your president's comments, President Bonner, I think, in November. So that's a foundational piece. The plans look like they're coming along. They are very, they're big. The plans are big, which we asked, we demanded that they be big, and they're that they be big, and they're big. So it's going to take time, you know, to get all the pieces in place, but we are headed in the right direction. The emerging plans for STEAM are at each level, elementary, middle, and high school, and they're given a 360 view. What's the programming requirement and need? What's the facility change and need? What's the staffing need, and how does that impact budget? And finally, we talked about, we did a mid-year data review. Ms. McCann reviewed our mid-year language and math data in grades K through 8. I-ready reports and teacher evaluations, which were sent to the board. They're very easy to understand. And they're so easy that you very clearly see that the kids are progressing beautifully this year, despite what we may all anecdotally, you know, believe is happening. They're doing a great job. I'd also like to say that while the committee didn't discuss this, the committee recalls that when we spoke about I-ready data previously here, we did have parent comment that said, you know, what about teacher evaluation? There's a lot of data being thrown around, and how can a number, you know, tell us how our children are doing? So I would like to be clear that this, you know, these types of numeric indicators and how they're utilized are part of a holistic evaluation. Our teachers continue to use their professional evaluative skills, and all of these things go into, you know, ensuring that the kids are progressing from where they are, and the data indicates at mid-year that they are. That's it. That was our meeting. Did I miss anything?
No.
Guys? No? Questions? Nope. All right, we meet again March 3rd, 3:00 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, Mr. Cologne, Operations. Okay. The Operations Committee met this past Monday, this Monday, for a little over an hour, 4:00 p.m. to 5:15. In attendance from the board, myself, Melanie Cohen, Yan Cho, and from the administration, Derek Jas, Emilio Torres, and Superintendent Huff. We covered a lot of ground in the meeting. We'll start with a brief comment on the current budget, because that's always useful to check into. The current year financials are in line with the current year's budget, and so that's an obvious good result. The budget process, which was discussed earlier in this meeting, is on track and proceeding as planned. Also a good result. And as has been noted, we discussed the fact that the Business Office has obtained all of the bottom-up investment requests from the various cabinet members and the building leaders. And now, the Business Office with Superintendent Huff are fine-tuning those numbers to develop a budget that will be presented to the committee, and then to the board, and then to the public next month. And important to note, given that there was a transition in the leadership of the Business Office, that the budget process under Derek will remain a bottom-up, zero-based budgeting process, which is important. As was discussed earlier, there are pending investments that the district would like to make. And in order to do that in an inflationary environment, it's obviously necessary to remove any expenses that are outdated and legacy and no longer evaluated to the district. And so that's the process the Budget Office is currently undertaking. We did discuss some of the investments that were mentioned with respect to STEAM resources and curriculum, as well as educational materials for K through 5 math, being included in this year's, in this upcoming budget. And also, review the two open items, the two substantial open items of health benefits and state aid. So state aid is still a TBD. We're hoping that number comes in at least, as what it has over the last couple of years, if not higher. But again, a TBD. And health benefits. One point regarding health benefits, there is an RFP process that's being undertaken for the broker services that the district utilizes. And so the district will be seeking, potentially, to change the broker that is being used. And again, this is all being done for purposes of identifying the best broker that the district can obtain for purposes of managing these expenses for the coming year and going forward. And so that RFP process kicks off next week. Facilities. We did review the HVAC project for this building, and the timing remains on track. There are some potential challenges to the timeline. Most of the work, as you might imagine, is targeted to be done during the summer. But there are, as we've all seen and read, bottlenecks with respect to equipment and components that are still flowing through supply chains. And so we're hoping that we can stay on track for the timing of this project, but there is some risk to it, which Derek and his team will monitor closely. The committee was also updated on financial impacts of the Brayton flooding from Hurricane Ida, as well as the mold remediation work at the middle school. It has been confirmed that the mold work qualifies for an emergency grant, the SDA Emergency Grant, which I mentioned in last month's meeting. And so that grant will cover about 2/3 of the total cost, a little under $100,000 of roughly $157,000 of total cost. And so that's a good result. Regarding the Brayton flood damage, the insurer has authorized a reimbursement of $355,000. And so that is a good result. However, the total cost for the damages and the work was about $425,000. And so we are hopeful that the insurer will authorize payment of the balance for the district. And so that is being worked on also by Derek and his team. One last note on that. Because the damage to Brayton was substantial, there's the potential that the building may qualify for FEMA funding for flood mitigation measures going forward. And so that would be great. It's still an open item and something that's going to be monitored over the course of this year. Obviously, if we can obtain funding for that building, we will do so. Food services. We reviewed the month-to-date and year-to-date P and L for food services. And so the food services offered to our students in all the buildings is actually P and L positive through December year-to-date to the tune of about $86,000. If you recall, during the pandemic, because of hybrid learning, et cetera, et cetera, we were running at a loss for food services, and so that's no longer the case. We were also informed of an initiative that will occur in March in the buildings. Pomtonian will offer flavors around the world to all of our students. And so different cuisines from various countries and regions globally offered to students in the schools. And so that'll be fun for them. Last item, there's a couple of administrative items and relevant legislation updates. We were informed of minor changes to our agenda format, which President Bonner alluded to earlier. Again, nothing substantive, just some changes that made sense for purposes of the flow of our meeting. We were comfortable with those changes. And we also were updated on a few legislative items, most notably, a regulation that will require a student representative for all New Jersey Boards of Education. And so there will be a student designated by the district to be present at public Board of Ed meetings and to update our board, and with that, the community, on student-related matters. And so more to come on that. That is an initiative for fiscal year 2023. Recommendations? No extraordinary recommendations, other than approval of the standard operating and financial items included in our agenda. Next meeting, March 2nd at 4:00 p.m., if not sooner, if we can get finished with policy a few minutes ahead of time, as we did this week. And that, I think, covers everything. Committee members? It was a mouthful. I know. Think I got through.
It's that time of year.
I know.
When are we supposed to get state aid numbers? I'm supposed to know this, but I don't.
So the governor's making his State of the State address on February 22nd, and usually within 48 hours. So by February 24th, we should have those numbers.
I actually have a question on the difference between what we received for Brayton and what it cost. Do you have, is there any sort of timeline when those conversations may be concluded?
So we, all of our information has been submitted to the insurance company, so they made the first payment based upon all that information. With regards to the balance, they had asked us for additional information, such as timesheets for employees who were responsible for the cleanup and stuff. So we provided that. So we're hopeful within a month we'll have the rest of the funds, if not an update, but I will let everybody know.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Policy Committee. Fantastic. Mr. Cho, policy.
All right. Jumping on here. Policy Committee, we met on Monday, February 7th, at 3:30 for 30 minutes. In attendance from the administration were Superintendent Scott Huff, Robert Gardella, Kathleen Murphy, and then board members Michael Cologne, Melanie Cohen, and myself. We had one new policy for discussion, policy 5541, anti-hazing. The New Jersey Legislature passed a new law, Timothy J. Piazza's law, which takes effect on March 1, 2022. For those of you that aren't aware, Timothy J. Piazza was a New Jersey resident who died while rushing a fraternity and penitentiary state a few years ago. This policy, the law requires all public and non-public high schools and middle school districts to adopt an anti-hazing policy. The policy details all the grounds for hazing, what constitutes hazing, and the appropriate punishments, and more importantly, applies to both conduct on and off the school grounds. This policy is totally separate in addition to existing policies on student conduct and harassment, intimidation, and bullying. In terms of committee recommendations, first reading for policy 5541, anti-hazing, and then a second reading from the policies from January and regulations. Michael, Melanie, any questions?
That's it.
Board, any questions about the anti-hazing policy?
Mandatory.
Mandatory.
As written.
As written.
Light week. Only from like this. Are they coming, are they holding on to them?
Wait till next month.
All right. Maybe we can get one of those students to preside next week when that comes in. I might need one of those students in about 10 minutes here. We're gonna see how that goes. Let's see, where are we, Communications? Ms. Primack, you made it.
Oh, yes. Sorry for my delay. So the Communications Committee met on February 2nd for 40 minutes. Please don't let Mr. Bonner tell you it was 18. And in addition to myself, I was joined with by Mr. Bonner, Ms. Justice, Ms. Calendar, Mr. Orr, and Superintendent Huff. We, as we are doing now every month, we are touching on previous projects, some of which are recurring every month, such as various newsletters, some of which have a video component. And we also followed up on the Meremis letter, and the community was very satisfied. The topics were very, they were timely. They were important to the community. The actual communications were very thorough and well-done. And in particular with the newsletters, we are very pleased that, of the focus on students making a positive impact on other students. I think it's just wonderful to highlight those connections and relationships that are going on in the district. And they're just wonderful, and it's, I think they've been a great topic. Looking at some sort of new projects that were in the works, on our district website, there really is not a dedicated page to our library and media centers. Our library and media specialists are quite extraordinary and talented, and they do so many different things and offer so many incredible experiences to students. Elementary, they teach STEAM initiatives. There's a whole mindfulness. There's so many functions. Makerspace, it was just incredible, the range of what they do and, of course, their impact on all of our students. So this will be a dedicated page that really highlights what they do, which will be so informative to the community, which is great. And then we also discussed the impending mid-year review, which everyone has seen already. That's the thing about being on the Communications Committee. By the time I get here, much of what I talk about is out. But it was terrific, a great way to celebrate so many incredible happenings and accomplishments in just a different format, not the standard letter to, you know, always nice to see just what's going on throughout the district. We, last spring, for the, I think it was, there was a communications survey launch that provided incredible, valuable feedback and actually changed the way the communications officer and was, you know, doing some things and reaching out and sharing information of all different kinds with the community. It was a very helpful survey. And so there will be one this spring again. Looking forward to the community's feedback to that survey. It is very helpful, and it really directly impacts how the administration shares critical information. So there will be another survey, surveys will be around spring break. And what the committee is doing is we will actually be kind of helping to finalize that survey at our next meeting. So we discussed our timeline of preparation. We did talk about a couple non-agenda items. So very briefly, the ongoing efforts of the board to communicate the process of decision-making, because it's actually pretty much the same. Mrs. Miller's described it prior to me. You know, Mrs. McCann described it, and I know Mr. Bonner has. And in fact, I think every president, you know, since I started, has sort of always tried to share a little bit about the decision process because, and it's, you know, how we conduct business, which is really, really how the administration, Superintendent Huff, leading his team, they review and look at the issue at hand, whether it's the need for equipment, whether it's, you know, a change in a program, whether it's something missing, whether it's the mask, you know, the mask mandate and changes, and just how they conduct their due diligence, which Superintendent Huff, in this particular, has described. They work with appropriate district personnel. They create plans or proposals where necessary, and then they bring those issues to the board, to the appropriate committee for discussion. And so, you know, we were just talking about different ways to build with the community an ongoing understanding of that process, which is pretty standard, again, just, you know, whatever the topic, and just how to do those ongoing efforts. So we started talking about that, and I think it was a good, it was a good initial discussion. We also got just a little bit more of an update, sorry, on the website outage. And just Mr. Orr, really, he shared that the full restoration took about a week, but they felt the vendor really was in excellent communication with them, gave them good updates, restored as quickly as possible, and that at no time, there was no data compromised from the district's perspective. And so that was good. So they were very pleased with how the vendor handled that. The January 22 clinic had a wonderful turnout, over 100 people. So that was great news. Clearly, it continued to be something that is serving the community. So sharing news about that is always excellent. And we don't have any recommendations for the board. Our next meeting is supposed to be February 22nd at 8:45 a.m. And that's what I have. Anything from my fellow committee member? Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Primack. All right. Negotiations, we did not negotiate. We have negotiated everything we can negotiate, and we're good for a while. So we can skip that one. Liaison reports. Did anyone liaise since the last board meeting? I see shaking heads to my left. I have one all the way down to the right. Ms. Cohen?
I went to the Union County School Board Association meeting yesterday, February 9th, held via Zoom. It was well-attended, about 50 board members from across Union County. And since other counties can also join, there were a couple of others from other counties across New Jersey that were there as well. We were reminded to complete our New Jersey SBA Board Census, and they gave us a legislative update on measures affecting public schools that has recently been signed into law by the governor. And then the bulk of the meeting was Dr. Zikowski, who's the Vice President for Entrepreneurial Education Initiatives at Kane University, and Aaron Lester, who's the Program Coordinator for Student Affairs at Kane, giving a presentation addressing diversity, equity, and inclusion in schools. And I'm happy to report that Summit's doing very well in terms of the recommendations made during that presentation, including having DEI as part of our district goals, as was, was described earlier tonight. So that was my, my meeting.
50 people, that's a lot.
Yeah, it was a lot, yeah.
And someone who didn't have to be there went.
It must have gotten better since I was doing that. Like three of us there. So, good for them. Good stuff. Okay, last, any other liaison reports? Should we move on? That's the last one. Phenomenal. All right, where are we? Right on time. Now is the time when we do public comments. Sue, before we get to that, Mr. Jess, please read the ground rules.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Bonner. Good evening, everybody. Please remember that anyone wishing to speak shall first seek recognition by the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address in a clear audible tone for the record. All comments should be directed to the board present and not individual member of the board. Unless additional time is granted by the board present, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. In addition, please note that this portion of the meeting is for public comment and not meant to be a back and forth. Board members and administration will not respond to questions or comments at this time, but information will be provided as soon as possible. Thank you.
All righty, item A. Any public comment for items on the agenda?
Now, see, I got more response from that than I did from the budget process. Really cool.
We never had one of those.
No. Lou had an iPhone.
See, I found money in the budget for that, where Lou wouldn't.
We're on time, we're going to stay there. All right, the big white clock is out, let's roll. Any public comment for items on the agenda? There typically isn't, but.
This is considered on the agenda right now.
It is not.
Let's stick.
We have a spot for you. It's called item B. All right, nothing on the agenda. Okay, excellent. Public comment for items not on the agenda. Ma'am, since you jumped right up, I'll let you go first.
My name's Lisa DeVries, 153 Maple Street. First, I want to thank you all, Dr., Mr. Huff, and the board for all the work. I know it's a tiring, exhausting process, but I do appreciate the bold and brave decision to follow Murphy's lead and lift the mask mandate. I do have just a couple concerns when I saw the verbiage on the email around protocols, contract tracing, isolation periods, and quarantine lengths. All of these things are causing harm to our children. There was a study out of Brown University published a month ago that found measurable deterioration in infants born during the pandemic. They looked at 1,000 infants and found a 20-point IQ point loss compared to children born pre-pandemic. Additionally, in a larger study, also at a Brown University, in children ages zero to five, in addition to the IQ loss seen, there was a 24% overall cognitive decline compared to kids born in 2016, 2017, and 2018. Cognitive decline was defined by objective test measures such as executive function, memory, intelligence testing, et cetera. So in 18 months, they saw a 24% overall decline in children. I think that's why a lot of us are here tonight. It's not just the masking, it's the isolation, it's the quarantining that are really hurting our children. Masking, social isolation have been proven to increase anxiety, depression, and self-harm. The New York Times recently reported a 40% increase in suicide among teenage girls. Our kids are being forced to increase the amount of screen time, and when they're on quarantine or remote learning, their only socialization with, with socialization with their peers is via social media. We all know that social media and increased screen time has been proven to directly impact mental health. We are in the middle of a mental health crisis in Summit, particularly with teenage girls. I know multiple families that can't even find licensed therapists right now because they're all overbooked. I know a lot of these daughters personally, the friends of mine. These girls were previously healthy, active members of the community. My girls aren't teenagers yet, they're not there, but I do worry about the harm. I brought one of my daughters, she was going to speak tonight, but she's already fallen asleep. But they are experiencing significant harm. And so, you know, I'll quote a well-known child psychiatrist, his name is Mark McDonald, he's out of West LA, when I say, "This is child abuse. The masking of our kids, the isolation, the quarantine, they pose risk." Oh, am I done my full three minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh. Okay, my last thing I will say is where there is risk, there must be choice. Thank you.
Sir?
You know what, one more quick thing, because this is very important. I want to underscore, I'm very passionate about my children. I understand there are differences of opinions, and there are parents out there equally concerned and wanting their children in masks. And that I support as well. They have the right to choose that, as we have the right to choose. And it's not just the mask, it's in particular the quarantining, the isolation. And I didn't get my whole page on whether or not it should include vaccination or not. It should have nothing to do with vaccination status. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My, thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm Dr. Mike Polison, not the famous YouTube Dr. Mike, but, but a chubby old redhead guy that's been around for a long time. So I am an MD, went to medical school and learned my trade after many, many years.
Sir, can you state your address for the conversation?
I'm sorry, in Summit, we live at 40, I'm sorry, 29 Plymouth Road. My work is my second home, and it's at 47 Maple Street. And so I'm not part of any group. I work by myself. I had a female partner years ago who retired. I obviously paid her way too much. Anyhow, been in practice for 37 years here as a primary care physician, as well as a pediatrician. As a physician, it's been incredibly frustrating for me to see all the divisions that have happened throughout the last couple of years. Something's not right, and something has to be done about it. To quote Bill Maher, and I'm not a fan, but I heard his speech the other night, "It's time to do what a growing list of countries have done, and announce we're going back to something normal. Beginning with recognizing what we are doing to kids is unnecessary and horrible. But to make kids who have a survival rate of 99.98 mask up like bandits. Unfortunately, the thing that's getting slowing is their education, their sanity, and their social skills." A study last week from Johns Hopkins concluded that the lockdowns we all suffered through had little impact in reducing COVID's death, COVID deaths, only by 2%, I'm sorry, .2% difference in deaths. I have a few points I'd like to make on the topic of COVID-19 pandemic, masks in schools, and the long-lasting repercussions. I may need a little bit more time, that someone might cede to me. Thank you. Okay. For the record, I've held these opinions about this chair since 2020. Mental health, you, the last person that spoke already, already alluded to this. I have written more prescriptions for psychotropic medicines, Zoloft, Xanax, Prozac, in the last two years than in my entire 37 years in clinical practice. It's not because I give out medicine freely, because I do not. Anybody that I've taken care of can attest to that. And I see some friendly faces, and maybe not some friendly faces here, that I've taken care of through the years. But it's because there's so much mental illness out there right now because of the disease that we've created, COVID-19. Stress, anxiety, depression, suicidal ideation have all skyrocketed during the last two years. Every child that I've taken care of in the last two years is stressed to varying degrees. It's all due to lack of normalcy in their lives. PTSD is a very real thing in my practice. And I'm passionate about what I do. I do it every day, and I do it literally seven days a week. How will we ever rectify the psychological and psychiatric issues that kids are experiencing, not to mention the development and educational delays? Sue, thank you.
My name is Haley Tauran. I live at 215 Ocojado. And I'd like to give my three minutes to Dr. Mike.
Ma'am, we're not going to, we're not going to give more minutes?
I'm sure everyone here would like to finish. Would like him to finish. Every single person here would like him to finish. And if this is my, would you rather me read for him? This is, sir, he should be able to read for himself.
You're lucky to read, but I'm not going to grant more minutes from the crowd.
Well, then I will not take my three minutes, he can have mine.
Ma'am, I'm not, we're not going to, we're not, I'm not going to grant any more minutes.
Second topic, masks. Why does no one talk about the simple physics of the viral microbial world? Viruses exist in a magical and mystical world. Masks, especially masks that are made of cloth, are useless. If you know the physics behind it, and I'm not here to insult anyone, but people have to understand many things about medicine, and it's so hard to give in a short period of time the knowledge that I have culled in all these years. The physical size of viral particles are smaller than the openings in the masks. Even the best mask option, an authentic, well-fitted M95 mask only filters down to .3 microns. We can't have a discussion until the cows come home, but people need to realize that microns, this sheet of paper is, is a tenth of a millimeter. Viruses are 1,000 times smaller than, 1,000 times smaller than the thickness of this piece of paper. Cloth masks, cloth masks are useless. Openings in a weave are hundreds and thousands of times larger than the viral particles. I give two examples. Think of a marble passing through a basketball hoop. That's what cloth masks are. Another example is swatting at gnats or mosquitoes with a chain-linked fence. Think of that. That's the physics of it. That's the reality. That's the science behind it. I don't know how many here have degrees in science for medicine, but it's the truth. On the other hand, bacterial particles are hundreds of times bigger than viral particles, sometimes thousands of times bigger. Masks have always been for use in operating theaters. Surgeons use them to prevent surgical wounds on the tissues that they're operating and they're cutting into. That's what they're for, and that's what they work best at. Other things to consider, masks decrease oxygen. We call it hypoxia. Masks decrease oxygen, I'm sorry, they decrease oxygen causing hypoxia. And they decrease, and they increase carbon dioxide causing hypoxia. So decrease oxygen, increase carbon dioxide.
Sir, can I ask you to let the next person speak? I've granted you double time. So I ask that you respect it the rest of the week.
Can I come back and speak? Because, because the best part is for last.
Once I get through everybody, we'll entertain that request. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Catalina Cola, 11 O'Shea Lane. I actually stood before you here back in June and asked for the same exact thing that I'm going to ask now. What we've learned over the last 18 months, and it's been very, very obvious in the last eight, so I hope that what I said to you last time may have been reflected, but we've learned that the governor, the CDC, and the DOH, in many cases, contrary to global organizations like, like WHO, have had no problem being reckless with the directives and the impact that they've had on our children. The guidance, with all due respect, the guidance that you gave today sounds very conditional. Like, the minute somebody sneezes, we're going to put masks back on our kids, we're going to have more quarantine, we're going to have more isolation, and that is just unacceptable. What we need more than anything moving forward is consistency through the tides that will inevitably come. This disease is not going anywhere. It will be back next fall, it will be back the following fall, and we need to learn to live with it. COVID is endemic. So, I will ask again, like I did in June, this town, this administration, needs to take a stand. We cannot just wait around for somebody to tell us what to do. Because, because our kids have to come first from now on. And let's all be honest, that has not been the case. None of these impositions have been in the best interest of our children. Mask optional with no return to a mandate ever. If kids prefer, if kids prefer to wear a mask, or at best, if they don't mind, let them, teachers too. But this isn't something to celebrate. It means that the adults in their lives have inflated the child's risk of the virus, their expected role in preventing this disease versus adults who they see walk around all day without masks. Exactly. And, or seen in front of students unmasked while all the kids behind them are masked. But I don't know if you've seen that picture. Nobody in this district would be that crass, I don't think. And their expected role in, oh, sorry, and the efficacy of masks, like the doctor just said before me, against airborne viral pathogens. In addition, as you mentioned in, in your email, I do, I mean, I'm glad that March 7th is coming. I hope March 7th is forever. Please, please, if there's anything you can take out of this, please make sure this is a permanent solution. But in addition, as you mentioned in your email, Superintendent, I do anticipate mixed reactions and lots of emotions. I think it's going to be very important to remind everyone involved, parents, teachers, administrators, et cetera, that we must respect everyone's personal decisions and treat everyone equally. You mentioned earlier about lessons going on in equity and inclusion and diversity. Well, guess what? This is a very divisive topic, and it is, we have to make sure that there's tolerance on both sides. My children know to respect the decisions of kids around them that want to wear masks, but the second I can't, I'm growing old mine. So, in conclusion, thank you for your time. Please, take me seriously this time. I don't, my kids are young. They're six and eight years old. I'm lucky. I, I've seen what's happened in the older grades, and I have two young girls. I just can't bear to think what isolation will do to them in the future. Thank you.
Good evening. Before we start the clock. 153 Maple Street. I wanted to thank all of y'all for the hard work through the pandemic. I appreciate you're under a lot of pressure as it relates to COVID policy. So I appreciate your leadership on it, your courage in making decisions. All right, my man, lift the clock.
Well played on the clock there, I do. I'll give you, I'll give you 30 extra seconds.
That's what I'm talking about. So, as you, as you can guess, I'm here to talk about, here to talk about masks. But before I start, I want to thank my wife. Thank you, babe, for having the leadership and the courage to stand up for our kids and for the children of this community. I'm really grateful to have you by my side. So, I want to start by taking us back to our lived experience, spring of 2020. I used to go to the grocery store, Lisa would chase me out of the house, make me wear ski goggles, a hat and a mask to go to the grocery store. That lasted for about two months, and then when I'd go to the grocery store, she would beg me to not wear ski goggles to go to the grocery store. By then, by then, she had learned that the cost of looking like the village idiot was higher than the risk of getting COVID through your eyes. That was our lived experience. We adjusted, and we put the goggles away. The same kid he said for masking our kids in school. While, while I am encouraged by our district, that our district has the courage to remove the mandate, I am troubled by the idea that, that there very well may be stipulations as it relates to the mandate. In short, I am concerned that mask rules may be different for students depending on their vaccine status. If we can establish that masks have not been effective, then it would stand to reason that different mask rules shouldn't apply to groups of different vaccine status. After all, if masks don't work for one group, then they don't work for any other group. As you reflect on tonight, and are faced with having to show leadership on the details of any future mask policy, I ask that you see your own child's face as they look to you for help. Consider how they would struggle with being othered and having to mask up while their fascinated friends receive all the benefits of getting back to normal, maskless. Any such policy would inevitably lead to bullying and unintentional emotional challenges. Please stand tall to ensure Summit remains no-fly zone for discrimination and bullying. So can we be comfortable asserting that masks indeed don't work? I think quite a few have presented tonight and made the case. We've had doctors from Harvard, Stanford, Tufts, Hopkins, all stand up and say there is no scientific evidence that masks work. Lastly, I would point, point out that during peak COVID in the spring of 2020, in the country of Sweden, before vaccines were even available, the country kept daycare and schools open without mask mandates, without testing, without social distancing, and for its, for all of its 1.8 million school-aged children. The results, wait for it, I got 30 more seconds. Zero COVID deaths. And the COVID risk for the teachers, and a COVID risk for teachers that was lower than other professionals. We have all been We have all been told to trust the science. I am happy to report the science is crystal clear. It's great news for all our schoolkids. We can now say with a smile on our face that very soon our kids will be able to see that masks don't work. Like my ski goggles, masks had a time and place. That time has passed. Let's put them away forever without stipulations. Thank you.
There's a young lady right here in the front.
Hi, Jennifer Salzman, 6 Essex Road. I'm very grateful for the decision Summit has made regarding mask choice, so thank you. The issue that now remains is what the guidelines and recommendations will be going forward. This month of limbo is perplexing, but in the meantime, I think it's fair to ask for a guaranteed plan for March 7th that is customized to our district based on what parents want for their own children. After two years and an enormous shift in COVID-related science, it doesn't seem necessary to have to follow a one-size-fits-all guideline from outside stakeholders anymore. And what is the reason we would continue to follow these outside guidelines? For two years, and most especially the last few months, we parents have felt helpless against decisions made for us with absolutely no option to say, "That doesn't work for my child." I'm standing here tonight to advocate that the mandatory COVID restrictions on students within Summit end on March 7th of this year, and children no longer be considered subjects of mitigation strategies, all in the name of selfless service for public safety. Keeping strict restrictions and continuing to treat children like the main vectors of transmission while in school seems contradictory in comparison to their freedom outside of school. It also seems unrealistic when the general public attends concerts and sporting events, eats in restaurants, shops at stores, and makes speeches about wearing masks, all while not wearing a mask or even social distancing in their personal lives. The amount of energy and time spent on making sure masks don't fall down, making sure kids don't get too close to one another, staggering lunchtimes, keeping track of seating assignments, which then allow no time to eat, shuffling kids outside for mask breaks, testing healthy individuals, and then implementing futile contact tracing protocols, publicly scorning kids for any slip-up of the countless restrictions they face daily, has been a tremendous distraction from actual class instruction and is negligent infliction of emotional distress. Please end the arbitrary quarantine of healthy students.
Do you need some water?
All right.
I won't take it away from your time if you want it. Pause.
Please end the arbitrary quarantine of healthy students, which has cost them months of lost learning time. Based on a lot of recent data, I think it is time we just do what we've always done when it comes to illness. If you feel unwell, stay home. When you feel better, rejoin society. The 2020 public health emergency is now the 2022 mental health emergency and speech delay emergency. The profound lack of dignity, privacy, autonomy, and treatment of children nationwide has been appalling and cannot continue. We can never give kids back what we took from them, but the people in charge of children in this city, right here, can make sure they don't miss another moment of their education or precious childhood. Thank you.
I would have given you 30 more seconds. I don't know how you got all that on that one piece of paper. I was impressed by that. Yes, ma'am.
I'm in sixth grade at the 7th Middle School. My name is on this paper, but as a minor, I'm not allowed to publicly state it here. I'm very happy to know that I won't have to wear a mask in school in a month. It would be hard to wait that long. COVID restrictions have affected so many parts of my life. School closed the day before I was supposed to perform in a musical show. In the beginning, I missed my friends, missed birthday parties and holidays with family. I felt sad and mad. I've almost fainted several times at school from feeling hot and anxious and like I couldn't breathe because of the mask. It was almost hard for me to know my two little brothers had to go through this too. My one brother is four grades below me. When he was in first grade and I was in fifth, it was only time we would ever be in the same school together. I never saw him that year, never got to live at hand in assembly. He has never had a normal elementary school day. My other brother is in preschool and says he can't hear his friends talk. What we kids lost wasn't taken away from us by COVID virus, which has no heart or soul to make decisions. We'll shut in and shut out to save everyone else. I don't think saying I'm happy to go mask optional makes me feel selfish. I think I gave a lot to go to go back all kids. On March 7th, I will go to school without a mask on. I will see some of my classmates for the very first time. March 7th will be the real first day of school. Thank you.
When we ask for students to be liaison to the board, we'll look out for you here in a little bit, okay? Who else?
Hi, Cynthia Verhoff, 41 Beekman Road. And there's a lot of conversation today, obviously, about masks, but I want to bring attention to an issue that I honestly think has a more negative impact, probably particularly to the young children, and that is social distancing. I want to say here, first of all, thank you. I appreciate that Summit really has been leaders in prioritizing in-person learning, and there was a time and a place for these COVID safety measures. But it's been two years. I have a seven-year-old who's never done, for two years, has not done a group project. She hasn't had circle time with her teacher. She hasn't played a math game with her classmates. And for two years, we've asked her to spend the majority of her school day at a desk. She is not allowed to move around the classroom, and she does all of her work really alone. You know, and we know, like, we know that's not developmentally appropriate for young children, and so it's not surprising. She's not engaged in school. She doesn't feel connected to her classmates, to her peers, and she is deeply unhappy. But here's the thing, like, a lot of the district has started to move on and start to move towards normal. And so I tell everyone, you know, go home, check the Summit Public Schools' social media pages, and you'll see picture after picture of students engaged in groups, working physically side by side together, the Chinese club at the high school, the musical, the debate team, the STEM program at Jefferson, the murals at Washington, and that's amazing. And I'm so glad that those kids have had those opportunities and those experiences, but you have to realize there are kids getting left behind, and there are kids that are still spending the majority of their school day literally chained to their chair. And so I really plead with you as you guys look at, I know there's so much emphasis on masks, and I'm grateful for your decision, that you really revise these social distancing policies, and that you ensure that there is compliance and consistency across the district so that we can really have our students have the kind of developmentally appropriate education that we want for them. Thank you.
I live in Oakland Place. Hello again. I come here every month with you guys. I am grateful, obviously, that you guys are going to remove masks, but as I said at the prior several meetings, I think we need to move beyond being grateful that we are in school, grateful that we can take off our masks, grateful that our children can, you know, walk down the halls. I think we need to move to the point where we actually can focus on the reading and the writing and the math that we're supposed to teach them rather than all the COVID protocols. I think the mask removal is a good first step. It should have been taken a year ago, and I think a lot of people on the board think it should have been taken a year ago, and in our district think it should have. So I think now is the time to say that the mandate will be gone. Quarantines are not mandated, COVID protocols, they're not mandated, they're guidance. We're going to be getting a lot of guidance, and we've said that frequently. But what we should do with that guidance is throw it in the trash and return to normal. My husband and I have eight kids, and our youngest is now three. She was an infant when this started, and our oldest are now in college. So we've had kids that have gone through the spectrum, that have missed proms and graduations and birthday parties and field trips and everything else, and I have three kids who are in school this year in masks, who have never been in school without a mask. And that, to me, is insanity. And we've asked them to do things that we would never, a generation ago, ask our children to do. We've asked my 10-year-old, for the last two years, who has asthma, to use his inhaler, put a piece of cloth on his face that we know doesn't work, go into a classroom where his teacher says, "You can't take it off," to blow your nose or get a drink, or, you know, you have to walk in the hall. We've asked him to then go play basketball for a couple hours, and I, this is nonsense. So we know the masks don't work. But it's not just the mask, it's the quarantines, it's the vaccination. Some of my children are vaccinated, some are not. My unvaccinated children are continually quarantined based on the status of a vaccinated friend who tests positive for COVID. The vaccinated children, even if they're home, even if their siblings and their parents at home have been diagnosed with COVID, they're allowed to come to school, which is great. They should come to school, put COVID kids next to my kids, as long as you're not going to quarantine them, I don't care. But if we're going to say that you have to come to school, you're allowed to come to school if you're vaccinated, the people that we're impacting are the unvaccinated kids next to them. My son doesn't have COVID, but he's been quarantined because his vaccinated buddy tests positive for it. Kids are fine. We have to stop this because we're creating discrimination among our children, which none of us want. So I think what I've urged you guys to do for almost every meeting I stand here is get all of our children back to school all of the time. Don't quarantine them, don't mask them, don't contact trace them, don't tell them they can't hold hands, don't tell them they can't share, don't tell them they can't take their masks off in the classroom, don't tell them that they're vectors of disease. Tell them they're students, they're first graders that need to learn to share, they're sixth graders that need to learn to communicate with one another, and walk down the halls and change classes and play sports and be children. It is not their responsibility to protect our teachers, our staff, their grandparents, their parents. It's not their responsibility. It's our responsibility to protect them, and it is time for us to throw the guidance away, look at our children and say, "We're done, we're back to normal. What can we, as parents, do for you?" And as adults and as administrators. And so I'll end, because my time is up, as I do every time, with the same words I've told my children for two years. Be brave, do not be afraid. Thank you very much.
You've got the gentleman right here, and you're up. Sorry.
I'll be brief. David Fosgate, 32 Laurel Avenue, here in Summit, New Jersey. I'm doing this as a civics lesson for my daughter, who joins me tonight, letting her know what lies ahead of her in terms of civic service, as well as standing up for what you believe in, as I think we all would do for our children. I thank each and every one of you for your service, your volunteerism, and especially our administrators for the work you do for our school district here in Summit. A lot tonight has been said about, you know, your decision. Respectfully, this is not your decision. This is Trenton's decision that we're going along with, okay? So I just want to make sure that when they do a bait and switch on us, or something happens 30 days from now whereby it is their decision to do otherwise, that we do what's right for Summit. Government starts right here. I don't get pulled over by the FBI for speeding in this town. I don't go in front of Congress for a zoning variance. What we do in Summit is what we do in Summit for Summit and those who live in Summit and pay taxes in Summit, okay? So I earnestly and respectfully ask you, as Summit residents and parents, many of you, to do what is right for Summit. Thank you.
Hey. Sorry. Erwin Miller, 5 Nob Hill Drive, new to Summit. I don't have a kid in the system. I have two young children in daycare. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for saying what you're saying. I feel like there's a growing movement of people who are speaking up, and I know that a lot of people have been speaking up for a long time, and it's getting louder. It's getting louder around the country. And I applaud you for going mask optional, and I think you'll continue to get applauded the more you continue to make good choices. So please continue to make good choices and put the children first. My favorite thing is to look at the all-agreed-upon facts and just read them out loud. This is a fact sheet from Pfizer's advisory to vaccine providers. It was updated a few weeks ago. This is for five- to 11-year-olds. Fact sheet for healthcare providers administering vaccine for five through 11 years of age. The tension is mounting. All right, warning, I could go through this for a while. Warnings: Myipiditis empariditis. The observed risk is highest in males 12 through 17 years of age. Oh, sorry, I should have read it earlier. That's all right. Let's go to information to provide to vaccine recipients/ caregivers. As the vaccination provider, you must communicate to the recipient or their caregiver information consistent with the vaccine information fact sheet for recipients and caregivers, and provide a copy or direct to the individual to the website to obtain the vaccine information. I'm not sure if anyone's kids here are vaccinated and receive that information. I'm guessing not. Prior to the individual receiving each dose of the Pfizer-BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine, including: FDA has authorized the emergency use of the Pfizer-BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine, which is not an FDA-approved vaccine. The recipient or their caregiver has the option to accept or refuse the Pfizer-BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine. The significant known and potential risks and benefits of the Pfizer-BioNTech COVID-19 vaccine, and the extent to which such risks and benefits are unknown. It's weird. I hope they don't mandate that. They don't know? It's strange. I don't care. Anyway, I can go on with this. You can read Pfizer's website. There's a lot of unknowns. I think throughout this whole thing, science has changed, and we know this, and we know that, whatever. It's always going to change. There's one thing we can all agree upon, is we don't really know what's going on, long-term, medium-term, whatever. So when we're mad, don't mandate your risk assessment, aren't me. That's it.
Hi, my name is Lisa Kern. I live on 15 DeBarry Place in Summit. This is my daughter Audrey. I've been a resident in Summit for 18 years. I have a son that is 21. I went through Summit School System, graduated from University of Pennsylvania. I have another son that also went through the system and is at Northeastern University. I am highly disappointed over the last two years with the Summit education. I am not blaming any of you at all, but I know that you were appointed in this position that you're on, and you took that appointment. You took that acceptance. I'm jealous of you. So we are at a point right now that we need you to fight for us. I cannot say this any clearer. You need to fight for this town. I can't say it any clearer. If you don't fight for us and you don't have that inside of you, please step down. It's not fair to us. And I hope that you understand that. When you go home tonight, look in the mirror, all of you, and say, "We have to fight. You can pull through the National School Board if you want to. We don't have to be part of it." Jill, do you mind me asking a personal question? How much do you pay in taxes? She pays a lot. A lot of people pay a lot. We have a very high tax rate in the country, whether it be on the state. We can pull this and pull it in and control our city. And that's what I'm looking for. My daughter is 11. She cannot get vaccinated. She was vaccine-injured, and she will not get vaccinated with the COVID-19 shot. She will not be discriminated by Summit Public Schools for that. She will not sit in a corner, she will not have her mask on, she will not be discriminated. We're not going backwards. I know Dr. Mike, and I know those other doctors that are no longer with us, that are also believing this. We cannot discriminate. It's up to all of you, and if you don't feel it in your heart, please step away and have someone else do it for you. Thank you.
Sir? Sir? I think I saw you first.
Hi, my name is Elliot Fishman, 34 Webster Avenue. Been a Summit resident for 14 years now. Two sons in the high school, ninth and 12th grade. I stood before you in August of 2021. Seems like forever ago. I stood before you in August 20 of 2021, seems like forever ago, urging to move beyond the fake science of the masks. I found it very gratifying that the public debate is finally caught up with some of those scientific articles that I cited when I spoke here before. Indeed, I've spent half my career as a college professor imploring my graduate students, when they were under my tutelage, to look carefully at data and to tease out ideology and mysticism. And I'm here to respectfully report that in terms of looking at data and making public policy, the emperor has no clothes. By the emperor, I mean the public health officials at the federal and state, who we automatically seem to follow because we ascribe to them this importance or authority which they have not earned. They don't quote the science, they don't do the studies, many of them are, regulatory apparatus is captured, but in the interest of pharmaceutical companies, there's a big revolving door. And this public health, what drew me off my couch this evening and had me come in here was the, this was attached to the agenda, the Plan for Safe Return to Person Instructions, dated January 14th, potentially adopted by the Board of Education, is that why it was included? Well, this lags the science by 12 to 15 months. And the claims in here are just appalling, it should be disregarded out of hand. This document should be shredded and separated from the Board of Education in my minutes, in my humble opinion. So somehow the public policy does lag behind the science by at least a year. And what stood out in particular, and I'll just wrap up here, is the, the mandate for urging vaccines, and we see this repeatedly in social media, urging vaccines for children who do not need it, creating two classes of students, the vax and the unvax, and effectively discriminating against the unvax who are quarantined, given if they don't have it, even if they had it and have natural immunities, even if they're tested. So the public policy is full of discrimination, it's not in the spirit of the Summit School District. What the science does tell us is these are not vaccines at all, this is a misnomer, but they're entirely unnecessary and experimental therapeutics with unknown side effects. We know some of the side effects, such as myocarditis in teenage boys and increased menses in teenage girls. I'll follow up by just showing a graph, this is from the World Health Organization, and the caption here is, Israel's fourth booster shot has successfully flattened the curve. Well, it's a little on axis unfortunately, Israel being the most vaccinated boosted country in the country at an excess of 90%, and it goes exponentially up. So the vaccines are junk science and so is the public policy.
I think I saw someone over here, over here, no? Yes, ma'am?
Dana Thompson, 1 Pearl Street in Summit. I just want to urge everyone to consider the stipulations that are going to come with March 7th and not have any. I have a daughter who's six and I just don't want to have to explain to her all of the restrictions or stipulations that would come with it, that's a really difficult conversation to have. I know she's only six and my difficult conversations are just beginning, but I don't want to have to have to explain to her that she's vaccinated or unvaccinated, that you can't wear it and someone else is, and even though she had COVID, those are really hard conversations to have with a six-year-old that just doesn't understand. And they're going to ask questions that are, that are sort of obvious, and I just want to be able to say to her that come March 7th, you can take your mask off and it doesn't matter who had the shot, who didn't have the shot, it doesn't matter if you're social-distanced or not, I want it to come with some sort of sense of normalcy for them without any stipulation, so she can just feel like she can go to school and not worry about so-and-so who's sitting next to her, who had COVID or had a shot. I just, those conversations are not meant to be had with a six-year-old, and that's what I want, I want the stipulations to be gone, especially for, you know, those younger children that are just, you can't have those conversations and they ask these questions. So that's all, I just really, please consider the quarantine and the contact tracing and the social distancing along with the masking. I think vaccination status is going to be a really tough conversation to have to have if for whatever reason they decide that you have to be vaccinated in order to wear a mask. I just don't think that that would be fair for that age group, or any age group for that matter, but to have to explain that to them. So, thank you.
Someone else over here, no? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Betsy McSneen, 53 Colt Road. Sorry, I'm not the best public speaker, I get emotional, but I was here in March 21 talking about quarantines and the impact on mental health. And here we are, talking about quarantines and mental health. The kids are not okay. I really applaud your decision to go mask optional on March 7th. It's critical, it's overdue, but I too am very concerned about the pending decisions around other stipulations. And who are we going to rely on to make those decisions? We typically have relied on Westfield Regional Board of Health, or Westfield Regional Health Department, which is one individual, it's a nurse, she mimics the state guidelines, or guidance, she's not a decision-maker, and we have taken her guidance, which is state guidance, in almost every situation. And I find that scary. Several people have spoken about, we should be making decisions around Summit, what's happening here, what's happening with our kids, our safety compliance, all of the health conditions of our kids have been so positive, and what they've gone through and how they've followed policies, and we're in a great place, and that's to everybody's credit. But we shouldn't be held to guidance that doesn't apply to Summit on March 7th. Other towns have ventured and followed guidance related to medical professionals, our neighbor Chatham, on January 25th, they are not quarantining kids, regardless of vaccination status, regardless of contact tracing. They're, if you're not feeling well, you don't go to school. They're following the Children's Hospital Philadelphia's published recommendations. They're not following the state guidance, they may take them into consideration, but they're not following them. We have the ability to not follow state guidance, and if we're going to rely and constantly default to the Westfield Regional Health Department, I think we're going to fail our kids. So I ask that before March 7th, we know who is going to make the decision on our kids? Is it you? Or is it a nurse in Westfield who is not consulting with educators, mental health professionals? We need a group of people to make this decision, and it starts with you, and I hope that's who will make the decision on March 7th.
I guess I hand over on this side again, equals, we're equal opportunity side choosers here. No? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Stacy Allen, I live on Plymouth Road in Summit. I'm not going to talk about the masks because I'm completely feeling like we have to get rid of masks like today, not March 7th, but that's another topic that everybody's already covered. I would like for Superintendent Huff to really consider stopping any chastising of students right now for taking their mask down to breathe, this is going on in the middle school all the time. During gym class, there are gym instructors reminding kids to pull their mask up while they're playing sports. So right today, we can stop some of the pain that we're causing kids and maybe turn around some of the mental health problems that are going on. Kids should not be chastised because they are trying to breathe, that is insane. We all have to know this is completely insane. So we just have to stop doing things that we know in our common sense brain, doesn't make any sense, it's just ridiculous. I applaud everybody for speaking about vaccinated versus unvaccinated, this is not a vaccine, it is a gene therapy product that is a shot. We cannot make any judgments on kids based on vaccination status. Kids are getting quarantined right now in Summit because their vaccinated friends are getting COVID, and you already heard this, and then they have to stay home. That is insane. My children should not have to stay home anymore, nobody's children should have to stay home any longer and miss any more school than they've already missed. So please, please, I appreciate Betsy's comments, please make these decisions for Summit yourself, please stand up for our kids. The state has lost their minds, they are making decisions from somewhere that nobody can understand, because we are speaking for our kids, you are here to listen to us telling you there's a crisis and you guys need to act on it. We need you to stand up for our kids, please, thank you.
Okay. We've heard a lot, yes, ma'am?
My name is Nancy Paulson, I'm Dr. Michael Paulson's wife, I work with him, I'm the business manager of our practice, 32 years in Summit. We live at 29 Plymouth Road and our business is 47 Maple Street. I just want to say, I mean, I have a lot to say about this, I could probably talk a long time like my husband, but I'm listening to all these parents and I presently have anybody in the school who are older, but the punitive nature of this, even going across the country and listening to what they're doing to people over a disease, over a virus, what happened to flu, what happened to strep throat, stomach viruses, rhinovirus causes a cold, coronavirus, it's all focused on COVID, and it's, right now it's just a cold. It's mutated down, it'll be endemic, and the fact that they punish people for not getting vaccinated, now I'm not anti-vax, we get vaccines in our practice, but I'm very doubtful about pushing kids to get the COVID virus, COVID vaccine, because, I have to tell you, in 2020, we saw tons of people that were sick, zero kids had COVID. Now, I had COVID, I got COVID in December 23rd, 2019, we didn't know what it was, and I was pretty sick, but I'm going to be 70, I'm healthy, I lived. I have a mother who's 94 in a nursing home, never tested positive for COVID, she's still alive. So it can be deadly for some people, but generally, kids have a survival rate of 99.99%. I mean, they don't get sick. Recently, with this new variant, which is much more contagious, but not as virulent, people get colds, the kids that tested positive, most of them are not sick. So I also personally understand the punitive measures, because I had COVID, I was really sick for six weeks, I've done multiple antibody tests, and I have all the antibodies two years later, because I had the whole virus in my body. The vaccine only protects you from the spike, the protein and that, so it's not a good vaccine. That's why people get it again, but they don't get as sick, just like with flu. So I never got vaccinated, so I don't want you all running out of the room, because I know I'm, I have, I go see my mother three times a week, I take my mask off, I kiss and I hug her, I haven't been sick in two years, and working in medicine for 32 years, we never get sick. And why is it? It's called immunity. And to not expose yourself to the environment and then hole yourself up in a room or a house does nothing good for your body. I never, when I got sick in 2019, I hadn't been sick in 30 years. I was a teacher in the 70s, and I knew when I first started teaching I would get sick, and you do. But what happens to teachers, just like we in medicine, we build up immunities. So one last thought, we shouldn't talk about vaccination, we should talk about immunity, and having kids tested for antibodies, because a lot of kids that are positive for it never get sick, they don't have symptoms, but you know what, they form antibodies. So you're making, somebody that has the antibodies get vaccinated. When my husband, my husband got sick in 2020, he already had the antibodies, over the hospital made him can vaccinate it, guess what, he got really sick both times, which is saying that your body doesn't want that, and it already has, and it's fighting it. So antibodies are a real thing, the government doesn't acknowledge it, they don't acknowledge natural immunity, but I also don't have a vaccine card, so then I am prohibited from doing things in certain places, which I don't care about, but you should really focus not on pushing kids to get vaccines, but to check immunity.
My name is Lindsay Karsich, I live at 8 Lennox Road.
You can pull that down if you want.
8 Lennox Road. Thank you so much for your work in keeping our school system one of the best in the state, and thank you for your support of making mask choice an option for all of us next month. I wasn't going to speak and I'm very nervous, what I want to ask of you is to please take a closer look into our grade schools. I have a fifth grader and a second grader in the school system here. I beg you from the bottom of my heart to completely erase social distancing from their school life. To say my children have suffered an insurmountable burden at school every day is a gross understatement. These burdens include, but are not limited to, sitting on painted dots in the hallway three feet apart, not being allowed to get up from their seats in the lunchroom, or throw their own lunch away, being publicly chided and embarrassed for improper mask wearing, wearing a mask during gym class, and sitting at their desks in total silence during indoor recess. During these past cold weeks, indoor recess consists of sitting at their desks while watching a movie or playing games on their Chromebooks. One particular frustrating day, the children of all grades had to sit on pre-assigned dots outside and not move. They were only allowed to speak to whomever was sitting directly next to them, it was below 40 degrees that particular day. These are just a few examples of how my kids are being denied the simple joys of socialization in school. They are hurting, they are sad, and they just want to be normal.
Okay, anybody else, public comment, not on the agenda? Hey, I appreciate everyone taking the time, it's not easy to step up to that mic, no matter what your opinion is on an issue, and so I appreciate it.
Can you email it to the board?
Okay, we'll take it again, every time you email it.
I've read it.
Yeah, we spoke on the phone.
I've read it, yes, I've read it, I've read the doctors.
Sometimes there's more volume than others, so.
Many of the meeting, we're going to approve board minutes, can I get a motion and a second for board minutes, please? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Thank you. Folks, if you don't mind moving out into the hallway so we can finish the meeting, thank you.
I'm not sure what I'm supposed to.
Many of the meeting, we're going to approve board minutes. Can I get a motion and a second for board minutes, please? All in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes. Folks, if you don't mind moving out into the hallway so we can finish the meeting, thank you. Curriculum and Instruction Program, a new section on the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve A through E curriculum instruction and program?
Tell them. Time goes to the runner.
May I have a second? On the roll, Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
President Bond.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Finance Section, A through O. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Second.
On the roll, Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bond.
Yes.
Motion carries. Excellent. Moving on. Personnel, A through, that's a three-pager. A through X. Can I get a motion?
Go move.
Second.
On the roll, Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bond.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, Policies. We got one first reading and one, two, three, four, five for a second reading. Can I get a motion?
Go move.
Second. On the roll, Ms. Primack.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Cho.
Yes.
Vice President Cologne.
Yes.
President Bond.
Yes.
Motion carries. I understand we do have a need for a closed session? We do. So pursuant to NJSA 10,4-12B, the Board of Education may exclude the pub from that portion of a meeting wherein the Board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA 10,4-12B, items 1 through 9. Now therefore be resolved in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. The Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 10,4-12B for the purpose of discussing the following matter, which is personnel and media review of non-tenure. May I have a motion for that, please?
Go move.
Mr. Cologne, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Primack. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and we are in executive at 9:23 PM.